For coming out on this beautiful summer day. I'd like to call the meeting to order if you'll please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we call the roll, please?
Bar Chef?
Here.
McCumber?
Here.
Dool?
Here.
Agustinelli?
Here.
Schmuckel?
Here.
And Corn?
Here.
And it's noted that McManus is absent and excused.
There you go. Thank you. First item on our agenda today is public comment. A member of the public who would like to address the board, please come to the podium and if you'd be so kind as to give us your name and address.
Name is Kevin Query. Address is 515 Georgetown here in Traverse City. I'm a member of the Traverse City Curling Club's Board of Directors and I am coming here tonight on behalf of the Traverse City Curling Club. First, I'd like to thank you for your continued support of the Traverse City Curling Club. We've made a commitment to our members and more largely the community that we'd get the inertia of redevelopment going in in the Cherryland Center and the winds of redevelopment are certainly getting gusty over there. I'm sure you guys have seen the TSO's announcement this morning. There's a lot of good things happening in that area. So to back it up, when we had initially started the Curling Club, we had done a feasibility study to see where the membership numbers would be one year, two year, three years. First year is expected based on other curling clubs in the country, you'd be at about 120 members for first year, 200 members for second, 350 for third, 450 for fourth year. With being open, excuse me, with being open in six months, we've already at about 410 members.
Wow.
So it went way quicker than we could have expected. And actually about 12 months ago, almost to the day, we were here in front of this very board to apply for a club license through the Michigan Liquor Control Commission and that required township approval. We were going to start with a club license and then move to a Class C liquor license once we got to about 400 members. Happened way quicker than we could have expected. And as of today, at about 10:15 a.m., the Michigan Liquor Control Commission formally approved our club license. And under advisement of our council, they suggested that we did not apply for a Class C license until we were formally given a club license. Well, that happened today and it was serendipitous that on the agenda this evening, 2023-18T, there is an application for a Class C liquor license. And on behalf of the Traverse City Curling Club, we would implore the board to refrain from making any final decisions on issuing the final Class C liquor license for Garfield Township until we can at least formally submit an application. Again, that happened at 10:15 today. Within hours, we're here, so we will be submitting a application shortly. We have a couple of things to tie up with the MLCC. But if you have any questions, you know where to reach us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, we will close public comment, come back to the board for approval of the agenda and statements of conflict. Anybody with a conflict of interest?
I'll make a motion. We approve the amended agenda with the papers that were on our desk.
Support.
We have a motion and support to approve the agenda as presented. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item is the consent calendar.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with in one board motion without discussion. Any member of the board, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed therefrom and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single board action adopting the consent calendar. This evening you have minutes from July 11th, 2023. Recommend approval. Bills from the General Fund, $88,624.15. Gordy Frazier, Developers Escrow Fund, Stormwater and Private Road Reviews, Utility Plan Reviews Oversight and Closeout, General Utilities, $56,180. And Park Funds DNR Trust Fund, $18,350 for a total of $105,009.25. MTT Update, Receive and File. STC Assessment Audit for 2023, Receive and File. Schedule a Public Hearing for September 12th, 2023 to establish the property tax mileage rate to be levied to support the township's 2024 general and fire fund accounts. Recommend approval. Consideration of Resolution 2023-19-T. A resolution recommending approval of an on-premises tasting room permit for Nocturnal Bloom Brewing LLC. Recommend approval. Consideration of Contractors' Application for Payment Number Three. Final to Walton Contracting Incorporated for River East Recreation Area Improvements Phase Two. Recommend approval. Consideration of River East Recreation Area Improvements Phase Two Dog Park Closeout and Turnover Documents. Recommend approval. Consideration of Village at Lafranier Woods Water Main and Sanitary Sewer Extension Closeout and Turnover Documents. Recommend approval. And Resolution to Approve Grand Traverse Metro Emergency Services Authority 2024 Budget Proposal. Recommend approval.
Is there any member of the board who would like to remove anything from the consent calendar for discussion?
I have a couple of questions on the bills, please.
Might be tough.
I know. That's what I was just thinking.
But we'll give it a try.
Thank you. Flurry.
Any others? Any member of the public who would like to remove anything from the consent calendar? Or staff? Look for a motion to approve with the exception of the bills.
I'll make the motion that we approve the consent calendar with the exception of the bills.
Support. We have a motion and support. Are there any questions or comments? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
Chef?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes.
All right. Approved. We move on to items removed from the consent calendar. Let's talk about bills.
I have a couple of questions and I just want a verification what they're for. Portable toilet, where is that?
I believe that is at the
Corbin River Valley.
Yeah, by the YMCA with the pickleball courts.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Pack lunch, pickleball court.
The second one was Otis Elevator for the $4,000. Is that a yearly thing?
I believe that is the maintenance contract, yes.
Okay. And the third is Pivot Point Partners License Fee for 2,400, what is that? $2,493?
Tibbetts Point.
Pivot Point Partners LLC and it says under the description, a license fee for $2,493.60.
Not even vaguely aware.
Okay.
Not either.
You got anything?
No.
Yeah, that would be a good leni question.
Okay. I make a motion that we accept the bills.
Support with a question.
With a question. I'm sorry, with a question, I said it.
I thought Boardman Valley had a permanent port-a-john down there.
There is a vault toilet.
Right.
Which is, requires a contractor to bring in water in order for it to operate and then pump it out and then put more water in. So it's far more expensive to operate than a port-a-potty.
Okay. So it's not a port-a-john. It's the services to support our facility that we have there?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That was my question.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Motion to approve the bills as presented. It has been moved and seconded. All in favor? Well, let's make this a roll call vote.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Agustinelli?
Yes.
Bar Chef?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes.
Next item is correspondence. We have the Traverse Connect Second Quarter Growth Barometer Results and Quarterly Accomplishments, which we may hear a little bit about later. Anybody want to look at that for discussion now? All right. We will move on to reports. Item A is the County Commissioners' Report.
Good evening. Brad Uett, Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners, District Four.
Lauren Flynn, Grand Traverse County Commissioners, District Two.
I guess I'll start out. Last week our board approved for the road commission a $13 million bond for building a new facility down in Kingsley, just east of their current facility. They have some tentative plans, but it's still in the infancy stage right now, so we'll just see how that goes as things progress. Last week we also approved a new phone service for the inmates at the jail. That will also include at some point in time, little iPads, I guess they are, so they can do text messages and stuff like that. It's a new program and actually Captain Bar Chef did a very good job of presenting very thorough, so we do think it'll be a good thing based on what he presented across the country, what's happening and stuff. It'll be a good thing for the inmates and communications with their families. The Leon County Board and the Grand Traverse County Board have approved the agreement between Beta and the two counties right now. That new agreement before Beta wants to change the bylaws or the just lost the word.
Agreement.
Yeah, the bylaws are, before they want to change things and add members and everything, they need to get it approved by the two counties first and stuff. So actually the two counties and Beta will have to all approve any kind of changes, so. And then the last thing I want to re, well, there's two other things, I guess. One thing is, it's kind of bigger news lately, I guess, is the sheriff is actually retiring September 3rd and everything. So I want to thank him for his service and everything, but there should be a new sheriff coming to town. And then
Literally.
Yeah. The last thing I want to report on, because I'm sure it's going to hit the news here sooner or later, is just recently the county has loaned almost $3.5 million to the pavilions for meeting their expenses. And currently the pavilions is running about $400,000 to $500,000 short every month in meeting their expenses. So they are waiting on some bigger payments, almost $10 million in payments from the state and the feds right now, but they've been waiting for about nine months on that, so as that unfolds, we'll keep you updated on that, too. And that's all I have.
I want to report that both, you're the lucky township that had two county commissioners travel to NACO, the National Association of Counties Conference in Austin. So we divided and conquered quite a few workshops to help us learn more, what we can do and partnership to facilitate things. I had affordable housing, opioid, daycare crisis, all that good stuff. He had great ones as well.
Yeah, I went to quite a few that were law enforcement based and then Freedom of Information Act seminar and everything. Mine's drawing a blank. I just came back from all west last night, but it was, it was four days of all full day conferences and everything, so that was really good.
So we made great connections with sheriffs, other county commissioners, administration. So looking forward to working with that, as well as I did just tour with the parks, Grand Traverse Parks today, and there is going to be a community needs assessment going out, that there is a link on the parks website. So I'd love for you to share that with your constituents, your neighbors, to take that survey for the parks, so we can make sure that we get a really good idea of what we need to do and what our constituents want for all our county parks.
Does anybody have any questions?
How was the weather in Austin?
105.
I think the coolest day was 104 and the hottest was 108.
Yes.
Okay.
During the break, during the break times, I can say that the pool got used for sure, so.
But um It was like walking out of air conditioning into like a hot brick wall.
Yeah.
It's dry though.
Oh, come on.
My hair did look good. My hair looked good. It wasn't fluffy.
So next year their conference is in Miami, or no?
Tampa.
Tampa. Tampa, Florida, July 18th, so it's probably not going to get much better.
It says that it'll be much better.
Like January or February, but they didn't want anything to do with that, so. But anyway, does anybody else have any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Okay. And like always, contact information is on county website if anybody needs to reach out, even though I think everybody has my information and probably Commissioner Flynn's too, but
Thank you very much.
I'm going to high tail it to Blair since it is the first meeting of the month, so thank you everyone and try to enjoy the fair this week if you have time.
Yeah, for sure.
Thanks.
We're going to switch things up a little bit here. We have a Parks Report that we're going to do next, because somebody has a schedule, some kind of
Yeah.
Oh, no.
Picking a bunch of sweaty kids. Hey, guys. Haven't seen you in a bit. Good to see you. Thanks for adjusting. Sorry to get me here and out of here in about 15 minutes. Parks Report's in your packet. You guys haven't heard, our pavilion, Dog Park Pavilion got hit by a vehicle over the weekend. I wasn't able to get there this afternoon on that side of town, but I think it's pretty much fixed. They might be fixing it the last little bit tomorrow morning. Grand Traverse Construction jumped on it. I got the green light Monday from our insurance carrier that says, go for it. But medical emergency guy left Silver Lake knowing he was having a reaction, passing out. And instead of hitting the brake, he hit the accelerator and went all the way through the field and took out two posts and came to rest of the Dog Park fence. Fence is fine, but the pavilion on the one side was, six by six posts were snapped right off, so. I think Grand Traverse Construction will have it all back up and running by tomorrow and Reynolds would go as normal Friday, Saturday, Sunday over there. So if you haven't heard that, that was our little drama Monday and Tuesday. Contractor got in, got all those bad poples that were snapped, snapped off the top and stump ground, that's done, cleaned up. That tree out front by the entrance is gone. They did that in that one big packet. I just got quotes, excuse me, for resealing the walking loop. And one of the contractors doesn't feel it's safe to just reseal two to three inch cracks and rubber coat it, so I'm having all those contractors rebid it in cutting and basically re-ashfolding those cracks. We got like 20 of them. It's never been done. So it's probably going to be around the, you know, ballpark that it'll save us from constantly resealing and crack sealing, but it's heaving, it's, it just needs to be done, so. If any questions on that, but I've got four contractors that are getting bids in probably by the end of the week and I'll present for our next meeting to get that, that through. CPOs helped us recover two bikes that were left over the weekend in a backpack. Family was super happy with the CPO's work on that. They stored it in the garage and got it back Monday. At Silver Lake Commons, working with Gordy Frazier on the best possible option of a trailhead over there by the Surgery Center in Copper Ridge. We've got some tentative ideas to the east side of the Surgery Center where that big dirt berm is there and how we can excavate and get some additional parking, a trailhead over there. Working with the mountain bike subcommittee, seeing if they can, you know, work on funding that through that subcommittee and that nonprofit we set up. So we getting you some numbers there soon, sending that out to bid. Carsonite Post came in. We're going to re-sign that whole mountain bike corner up there so it's safer. Blocking out trails that are cross trailing, so that group's been really good on helping us and spreading the word on no more rogue trails and, and, you know, going in certain directions and making it a lot safer, so kudos to them. Moved along, couple encampments there, pretty cooperative people that didn't know they couldn't camp at the commons, but they're gone. Over at River East, at Walton Construction did really great. The contractor there, Dustin, was super cooperative, very communicative. Water stations are in. Sean and I have got it mowed and fertilized a few times. The grass is coming in, so I think that place will be open in the spring and the turf will be established enough we can put dogs in there. So yeah, that's part of the bills. You guys saw there, we closing that one out. The deputies again went down behind Goodwill Inn on our property and moved along with like four encampments and pretty cooperative. We drug up all the tents on Goodwill Inn's property and I think to date they were all cleaned up. So thanks again to the Sheriff's Department and helping the cause there. Boardman Valley, we're looking to redo a lot of the overlooks that the old sear posts are rotting. So we're looking to do a treated lumber that'll last, you know, a good 10, 15 years if not longer. So we're going to work on trying to get a district with bulk order from the district that gets them pretty cheap. So Sean and I, maybe seeds will start plugging along at those overlooks and trails that just keep people off from jumping in the bank and causing erosion of the Boardman, so that's on the radar this fall. Miller Creek, we're fixing some boardwalks. It's been doing pretty well. There's some trees that fell down in that storm, but we took care of those. Kids Creek, that planning we did, we got some die-off which they knew was going to happen. And it sounds like CRA went to the Bureau of Indian Affairs and it sounds like they're actually going to supply grant money to replant this fall or possibly in the spring on the ones that didn't make it, so they're actually going to foot the bill for that replanting. And I got Tart and a volunteer group coming out tomorrow to start pulling and cutting Autumn Olive on the Buffalo Ridge Trail. So Sean and I are going to help with that cause and start getting some of the invasives out the trail and letting it open up a little bit over there, so. Any questions from me? Need to see something different, anything else?
Good job. Thank you.
Great. That's easy.
Thanks, people. Have a good night.
Thank you. And part two?
Part two. We had a Parks and Rec meeting last night. A couple of things came up. That's a great commission. I mean, a lot of discussion and it's really good. There are good people on there. The first thing that was brought up is I did meet with Dan Walters for the placement of the flagpole. And he has decided to place it between the pavilion and the bathroom. I did bring up about the electric that he wants to do at his cost. It's not going to be costing anything to the township. And they were, the commission was all for it. So what Dan would like to do is he wants to wait on the flagpole and get his electrician out there and get the electric put in so he can light the flagpole. So if it's okay with this board, I will contact him and let him know, or do we need a motion on that?
I think the board was all
They were all for
Before it's the last time we talked.
Yeah, we were all for it, but you wanted me to bring it to the Parks and Rec Commission, which I did last night.
And they had no
Oh, they were happy about it. They were very, very happy about it.
I think it's okay to move forward.
Okay, especially with all the extension cords that were plugged in for parties or anything like that.
You could just maybe submit the plans to Carl, so before he
Right. And then also at that meeting last night, they were talking about budget for next year. We, there was a three main projects that they were looking at, which was River East, Copper Ridge, the trailhead, and then Red Drive. They wanted me to bring it back to the board and I said no, and because of the reason why is we didn't have any money attached to it. And I said, so, you know, I could bring it back to the board, but there's going to be no approval until we have a money figure at that. So what Chris decided to do last night is to direct staff to see how much this is going to cost, so when we bring the budget back. Now, we don't have another meeting until October 2nd, so as far as Parks and Rec goes. So we won't have a budget to this board until after that meeting. I mean, what we're proposing for next year's budget.
Yeah.
Okay, but I just wanted you to be aware that we don't meet until October 2nd and they're going to give us some kind of, because the way it was listed last night, there was three projects and we ended up moving River East to the top. And putting the other things second and third in line rather than the Copper Ridge one, so. But at that point in time, so I told them that we would like to have it in writing and that that recommendation comes from our board, from Parks and Rec Commission, that I could bring it back to this board when we do the budget planning.
Yeah, we are probably going to have our first study session before the end of the month, so
That's what I told them.
We'll work that into that.
Yeah, I told them. I said, the problem being is we usually start having on the end of August, beginning of September. So just so the board knows that we won't have anything from Parks until after our October 2nd meeting. Because I can't bring something to the board, I told them, without any money attached to it.
However, staff could.
That's true. That's true. But wouldn't you have to want it for the okay from the Parks Rec, the Rec Commission first? As we normally do.
It's, it's a recommendation.
Right.
It sounds like they made a recommendation.
Right.
I'm okay.
Okay.
Chuck?
Yeah.
So I don't know why I went down there. I'm trying to think. Joint Rec, or yeah, Joint Rec Authority. We had an issue that we were talking about in there, so I drove down Red Drive. And on the west side of that, about in the middle, the ditch is so full of sediment and plant that the flow of creek water is coming onto the road now along the west side and then dumping back into the ditch to flow under the culvert. We had some discussion for something, I don't know what the Joint Rec was talking about, but I had mentioned there that people may want to tread lightly on that because they maintain the road and that water flow is now on the road.
Right. So Greenspire messed up their stormwater plan. That's where the issue began years ago. And I've been relatively insistent that it's probably a good idea to close Red Drive and just put a a walking or biking path through there. And the people who are, and the Barnes Park would be thrilled not to have people dropping off their kids and then racing through their park.
Yeah.
Hopefully that'll come to pass.
Yeah, because if not, it's going to be
The road just keeps sinking in the mud.
Yeah, it's going to be Eagle permits to dig it out and clean the ditch line out, because I mean, it's, I literally was like, where, you know, I thought it was puddle water and then as I was walking, I looked and I'm like, this is moving water.
Well, nobody owns the road.
Right now, the, the, it's part of the Joint Rec Authority.
Well, they're maintaining, but I don't think they have ownership of it, do they? Olive Red Drive?
It's
It's not our property.
It's in the commons, isn't it?
Yeah, it's within the commons property, yeah. And it's between the Barnes Park and the trailhead.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, I don't, as they said, there was a road that was it Monroe that ran all the way out
Elmwood.
Elmwood, that ran all the way out to Silver Lake years ago, and the same thing kept happening. It just kept sinking.
Disappeared.
They dumped load after load of gravel and then
They closed it.
They finally just closed it because it was a losing battle.
Yeah.
You shouldn't build in wetlands.
No, and this one, I think if we get a deluge storm, it's going to go right across and cut Red Drive right in half. I mean, that was Then at that point, nobody can, then nobody can touch it because you can't mess with running water, so.
That'll make the decision easy.
Just so you know, FYI.
All right. Any other questions for Parks? Okay, then we are going to postpone the construction report.
She's here.
Oh, she is.
She walked in.
She walked in.
Oh, hello. We will hear the construction report now.
That was quick. She had to go out and fix Green Lake.
They got riff issues there, too, so. But you guys don't anymore. Jennifer Graham, Gordy Frazier, good evening. In your packet dated August 2nd, you should have our engineering report, a few highlights. We are, just to jump ahead, on Long Lake Water Main Extension, I anticipate that's going to be in your packet next week, or next month, excuse me. Finalized that. Elmer's did a great job. Ultimately, another about 30 grand under budget. So, and as a reminder, that project was fully funded through an Eagle Cross Contamination Grant and also through County ARPA funds, so. That was very successful and since then, a lot of interest and connections. There's now another development to the west of them that we incorporated timely and extension, and so with that, we're definitely motivated to relocate that booster that's been on our capital improvement project near the school at TCAP's Pump Station 5 and finalizing that design. We've been kind of holding off on that. A lot of it's just because of bid prices and the construction environment, but now with all the customers, we're going to be putting that out for bid this fall, just because we've got such large demand that it's going to be a great benefit for that area to get that booster station relocated and improve fire flows and pressures for everyone. Couple other things, Silver Lake Sewer Extension to Francisco's, we did put that out for bid and unfortunately, we did not receive any bids.
Oh.
Yeah. Not surprising. A lot of the contractors are busy, so I have taken the liberty to discuss with them. Typically, we're just seeing bids from one local in the area, and so we're going to rebid it and I'm hopeful that next year we'll prove better results. So I'm continuing to be in communication with them. They're still going through building code and plans, so it's not holding them up by any means for construction, but we do want to make sure that we're, you know, we get them a sewer connection before they're in full expansion mode. But that was unfortunate, but not surprising. Capital Improvement Projects, as you guys know, we submitted a drinking water revolving fund project plan. Scores have come back and we're pretty consistent with where I anticipated because you guys do run a great system. We don't have any violations, that we're not considered significantly overburdened of a community. And typically, those that either are, have a lower median household income and those that don't operate a good system tend to score better. As ironic as that may sound, there was also 200 applications, which is about 200% more than they normally get. So they've got a long road ahead of them and hopefully we'll see some more funding come from the state level. River East, you guys approved closeout for Phase Two, I hope you guys have been out there, it looks great. Grass is growing and I think we're just in a holding pattern until we get establishment next year for it to get used for the dog park. And we're moving ahead with Phase Three and gonna meet with staff, my plan is in the next couple of weeks to finalize the bathroom and then have that out for bid next month is our timeline for that. Mark in my office has been working with Derek on some Trailhead parking over by Copper Ridge, just some cost estimates and some possibilities. And then going on to the plan review side, Village of Lefraine, we closed out. Beta is done with their utilities and we're just working through punch list. Ridge is at forty-five, formerly South Twenty-two is starting construction next week, Britton's under construction, Burmley Hills Condos under construction, and we just got in the villages at Garfield for utility review, so. Couple things to work on.
Just a cost of few.
Just a couple. But I will entertain any questions you guys might have for me.
I don't know if this is for Jennifer or for Chuck, or I've had a couple of my neighbors contact me and ask me what the status of was of our road.
Right.
Do we know what the status of it is? I know that we've signed the petition and everything else and cause they're asking me, when can we expect to know what the cost is and if it's gonna happen, and I couldn't give them an answer.
We have inquired and I haven't received an answer, have you? No.
No, I just emailed the Road Commission today, um, cause the same question was posed for Blue Star as well. Where is the status of that one for that road SAD, and so I'm waiting for the engineer to email me back.
Okay. If at all possible, could you contact me and let me know when you hear, so I can let them know? Cause they all know, they must know on Tuesdays, you know, I have a meeting, cause they're all asking me today, they're knocking on my door. So if you possibly could, Jennifer.
Yep, I will shoot you a note.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Any other questions?
Yeah, just a question, uh, so how serious is this, um, under the Stone Ridge PRV replacement? The asterisk that you have there at the bottom of that, uh, with information about that water main having some breakage and those kinds of things.
They did go in and cut out that area, um, but that's an area, it's ductile iron pipe and that's an area with high groundwater. And so what we're experiencing is the ductile iron in situations like that don't have as long a life expectancy. And so what happens is with the different minerals and the groundwater, it does exterior pitting of the pipe rather than from the interior causing leaks. They've gone in and repaired that, but I have that on a note just because at some point, you know, it's gonna continue to exacerbate the situation, and so that's an area that we probably wanna look at replacing with plastic. And plastic's your go-to anyway now, I mean, this was put in, what, the nineties, I think?
But so as we look at our plan here.
Yep.
How?
A priority, yeah, I mean, it can wait, yeah, there's other things that are more priority, like McCray PRV replacement is more dire than that water main. The Stone Ridge PRV itself is more of a dire than the water main itself, I would feel. Because if it leaks, we can always go in, cut it, and then do repair segments as needed. Although it's not ideal, it, it is a permanent fix.
Thanks.
Are you repairing it with plastic pipe?
Yeah. Correct, yep. So you just kinda chase it.
Yeah, eventually it'll be all plastic.
Eventually it'll be all, exactly.
Makes sense.
Any other questions for Jennifer? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer.
The next item is the Sheriff's Report, and we have a new reporter. Acting Lieutenant Roy Reska.
Good evening, and I am filling in for Brandon for the next month, so you'll at least see me one more time. Hopefully for several years after, if I can get this position, but. Um, I've been with the department for a little over twenty-five years, had multiple different assignments. My most recent assignment was the Administrative Sergeant, hiring, training, ordering equipment, things like that. But tonight, I'll read your stats. I did work East Bay Township back in two thousand and two, and that's super dating us. Worked with Chris.
Hecking the day.
So, um, Garfield Township's always been the busiest township. So just some of the things that catch my eye right away is that the guys in Garfield, guys and girls handled seventy-seven accidents, eleven of those were injury accidents. When I look at the OWI stats, I noticed Garfield Township had, um, ten drunk driving arrests. And then I'm just looking at this comparing it to the city, which I don't know how accurate this is, it says they only had three for the month of July. And then fifty-nine criminal arrests for Garfield Township. So that's the only thing I really, I'd like to, when I do the stats next month, maybe I'll print out, or I'd like to print out the complaint load the guys have handled. Things that are happening right now is Deputy Mikowski's getting ready to go back into the, the schools. Um, I've got him doing some SRO training and things like that, and he's also been active with, um, the workplace violence presentations that he's been doing, um, he's done multiple of those this summer. And then Deputy Preston is also been doing the fraud awareness presentation for several different groups in the township. And it sounds like the guys have been working pretty close with Derek from the Parks Department. And I guess what I'd like to see is I get my, get moving in this position is before summer's out, get the CPOs riding their bikes a little bit more, especially on the new path and. But other than that, I don't, I have a whole lot to report.
Can you identify what SRO is to this board?
The School Resource Officer.
Thank you.
So Deputy Mikowski will be attending a couple of different training things, and he's gonna attend those with the new Kingsley School Resource Officer. So that'll be good, they can work together and come up with different things, and the new Kingsley guy's done it before, and so it'll be, it'll be good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Next item is the GT Metro Fire Report. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, everyone, uh, thank you for the previous resolution passed under, um, consent calendar on our twenty twenty-four budget, I appreciate that. I was here tonight prepared to present it, but, um, thank you for looking at it and approving it that way. And we will be back in September as well. You have in your packets are July statistics, uh, for July, even considering the craziness that, uh, was the Cherry Festival, our calls were roughly the same as last year, five hundred and forty-three total calls for July. Uh, here in Garfield, three hundred and sixty-five of those were, uh, here in Garfield Township, uh, total. Our Grand Travers Metro total EMS calls were four hundred and sixty-one, and of those, three hundred and nineteen of those calls were here in Garfield. And, uh, it may sound like a broken record, but, uh, falls and lift assists lead our, our EMS responses. And often, we can lift that person up and relieve the ambulance from being there. So I know for June, we were able to cancel the ambulance sixty-two times, which allowed that ambulance to stay available for, uh, other calls. Uh, you can see that our Priority One calls were actually down a little bit in July, a hundred and three, uh, versus the Priority Threes were a hundred and fifty-eight. Uh, the fifty-eight ones are the Priority Twos, that, you know, the patient and dispatch doesn't quite know whether it's bad enough to go lights and sirens or, um, uh, not, not severe enough to, to, to not run lights and sirens. But, um, just the warm weather that we had in July is raising, uh, raising its toll on our, our older adults. Our pie graphs in there, you can see the Station Eleven down the road is our busiest station at twenty-eight percent. Actually, uh, Station One, uh, on Three Mile was the busiest in July, thirty-two percent, Station Eleven was twenty-eight percent. Station Twelve, twenty-two percent, but the next pie graph shows that of all Metro's calls, um, Garfield has sixty-seven percent of our calls, East Bay Twenty-One and Acme Ten. Just to give you a little, um, status on some things happening in Metro, we, after not having an investigator inspector for about eight months, we finally, uh, offered a job to the Fire Marshal from Grozeal, uh, Kevin Langley, uh, he's accepted the position and he and his family will be moving north and he's going through that, um, terrible.
Search.
Search. Of, of where, where to go, east side, east side, west side, um, Kingsley, Interlochen, and so we surely would like him to be close by, and until he sells his house, we, we're going to allow him to live at Station Eleven temporarily till he finds a, a place and that will go, he's a, he's a firefighter, um, one and two, he's an EMT, uh, has all of his credentials. So that was nice that we don't have to send this person away to school. And him being the Fire Marshal in Grozeal, he, he knows what he's getting into, but he wanted to move north for quality of life and, um, for him and his family. Uh, we let the board know in July that we're, um, putting some of our excess equipment on public surplus and Assistant Chief Posey's been working on that, and there's been bidding wars on, on some of our equipment. Uh, we just, uh, in the end of June, we had a brand-new employee start, he, uh, was a firefighter up in the Brimley area. So we just got done spending six weeks of orienting him, I just got done with all of his JPRs and he turned his resignation yesterday.
Oh.
We, we start, we don't have to start over again, we had another part-timer that we were running through orientation and we offered him the job and he accepted it, so. You know, we have the same problem, you spend all this time and money on training and JPRs and calls and so. And we still have, we still have one off on the workers' comp. So it's been a little, little tough, the guys are, and ladies are, uh, not liking the mandatory overtime right now, but we really see once we get, we get through, uh, August, we'll be in pretty good shape. Uh, we're, uh, this month, we trained on roof operations, uh, the good old, um, human resources of sexual harassment, workplace diversity, SCBA drills, and we did chest pain on our EMS. Also, later this month, we're gonna be working with the Sheriff's Department on Rescue Task Force, active assailant drills, just before school starts. And, uh, we just wanna make sure that we're prepared for that. Recent calls of interest, uh, Terrace, Terrace Bluff, here in Garfield, we had an appliance fire. Uh, you all have seen the newspaper of the South Airport, uh, Mutual Station Fire, uh, it was a great stop there and, um, yeah, it's, that, that was a, that was a strange one. We got called down to Exeter County for two hundred-plus acre wildland, uh, we sent a tanker down there. In Brian's line of work, they just, uh, about time that all the people started coming into our area, we got all of our hotels, motels, public assemblies and restaurants all inspected, even being down and inspector. And we, maybe I mentioned this last month, we're back doing safe neighborhood programs, which is the, the fire alarm program. So we're actually going into neighborhoods, knocking on doors, asking if we can see their smoke alarms. And some of them are just need batteries, and a few of them, uh, have no working smoke alarm. So through our program, we actually install, um, smoke alarms in the living areas and make them compliant. Other than that, Jen, our Public Educator's been busy out in the community, again, doing car seat checks, uh, doing tours, uh, doing fire evacuation drills, we did GT, um, Bay Children's Advocacy Center and Skilled Manufacturing, and we're out doing AED and, um, hands-only CPR to many businesses in the area. So we appreciate your support, unless you have anything further. That's the Metro Report for the month.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the Traverse Connect presentation.
Good evening, everyone, thanks for having me, Warren Call with Traverse Connect. Um, I am here regarding a, um, part of our service contract with you covers an industrial, uh, market feasibility study that was, uh, that was requested. That's in your packet today. Um, I'm also, of course, happy to, uh, take questions or any comments on, on our broader economic development that's also part of our contract with you, such as the, the quarterly report that was, uh, mentioned earlier. So we can, can take questions on any and all, as, as you wish, wish. Um, this, this study represented a portion of and a continuation of kind of the broader things that we're doing. This is really about the availability and the demand of specifically industrial sites and, and light use, oftentimes industrial sites being the highest demand. Um, I'll, I'll go through, uh, some summary bullet points, um, I won't go through everything in the report, but we're happy to touch on any specifics you might have, so please stop me if you have questions now or, or as I work through it. As you're all very well aware, um, Garfield Township in, in large part serves as, as the hub, uh, the nodal hub of, of Northern Michigan in a lot of ways. And is, is one of the highest trafficked and, um, and highest use, uh, areas in, in really the entire, the entire region. And per such, it has, unlike some regions, it has demand across all land use. You know, some, some regions have, have heavy residential or heavy agricultural, uh, heavy retail. Garfield Township has heavy, heavy demand for every type of, of land use, and obviously that creates some challenges for you. The, um, you know, the, the ability to manage a diversified demand is obviously one of those things that we're trying to, to help with this, with this study. This study has, uh, both an inventory, which indicates, uh, rather limited availability of industrial, uh, parcels and, and sites. And then the market research and demand part of the study shows pent-up demand for, um, beyond what's, beyond what's available. So I'll go through, uh, each of those, but really the, where the rubber meets the road, there's, there's strong demand for industrial parcels in the township, especially the light industrial parcels of really varying sizes, from, from small up to quite large. The, the inventory summary, um, that's, that's included in here is, is really a kind of a census or a survey of what's currently and maybe potentially available, so not all the parcels that we looked at are actually for sale, but they could be developed. And this is intended as a, as a non-exhaustive listing of examples rather than, you know, a, a full kind of real estate breakdown. But we've broken it into the four categories, corridors, as it were. The first of those is the Cass Corridor, um, running south out of, out of the city and, and down, um, down, uh, south toward, um, toward Keystone. As you're probably all very well, well aware, there's, you know, the inventory is quite limited and it's a constraint on both the, the current tenants that are there who are wanting to expand as well as potential tenants who see that as a, as a great location, given its, its central, uh, you know, access to everything across, across the region. The second area is a Hammond, the Hammond Corridor, um, this is probably the, the highest priority and, and highest opportunity for growth in the township. And as such, you know, managing the demand, the zoning and the growth in that area is gonna be probably one of the key focus areas and perhaps an area of challenge because of, because of high demand. The US Thirty-One Corridor, um, is obviously an opportunity for some light-use industrial expansion. Um, most of the, the current industrial is, is at capacity in, in that area. Um, there is obviously some projects and some potential plans, uh, before you and before the Planning Commission that, that would, uh, potentially expand that. And then the Barlow Corridor, uh, which includes in, in our kind of grouping, the South Airport Road and Continental Drive areas, this is really near full capacity and there's very limited opportunities for expansion in, in that area. It's really built out and, um, you know, parcels, buildings come up for sale, but that's really the only opportunity that's, that's there. As we look at, at those various corridors and, and the analysis that we did with realtors, developers, township, uh, staff as well as industrial companies, both that are located in the township and, and others outside, there's a couple of key things that I would highlight for you. Available industrial parcels are scarce, and that's, that's almost a direct quote. And especially the, the medium to large lots that, um, you know, especially manufacturing companies. And especially the medium-to-large lots that, you know, especially manufacturing companies and production facilities, they are, and I would say also logistics companies, if they could have their druthers, they would locate in Garfield Township. And it's just the limited availability is a constraint. And that's what we hear time and time again. So obviously, what we see is between the limited availability, the high construction costs, and the considerable demand, prices and leasing rates are up substantially over the last several years. Given that, you know, there is certainly an opportunity to address that demand if officials want to explore that. I would say that certainly there's concern regarding this study and in general about some near-term economic concerns that might be out there. Obviously, with, you know, there's potential discussion of recession, there's concerns about interest rates, there's concerns about inflation, there's concerns about availability of labor. So all of those are very real and very important near-term considerations. But as we look at it, it potentially even provides a little bit of a pause period for the township to really take into consideration the long-term demands. So there may actually be a soft patch here of demand that's not going to be as strong, but we do believe that that will rebound back as perhaps some of those concerns about inflation and interest rates decrease over time, if they do. Because we do really see it as a very persistent, long-term need. I would, I should pause there and say, it's not just Garfield Township's responsibility to do something about this. Other townships have the same need to look at it as well. Market perception, and this is not meant by any means to be criticism, it's simply just us trying to report back what we've, what we're hearing. There is concern that there's a potential excess of retail and office space and while a lack of industrial properties. There's concerns about current and potential vacancies, especially for potential of retail declining as we continue to see more and more online retail take the place of brick-and-mortar retail. And I would say that especially from commercial realtors and industrial use business leaders, there's a thought that the township in general, or excuse me, the township specifically but other municipal entities could do more to encourage industrial and manufacturing use. One thing that is probably more prevalent, especially in Garfield Township, is there's substantial agricultural designation and parcels very close to industrial and high-traffic areas. So there's, of course, always going to be those conversations of developers and industrial use customers saying, why not, you know, why not that farmland that's right there next to the road? Obviously, that brings up a whole lot of, you know, balancing issues that you have to deal with, but certainly something that gets mentioned frequently. So looking at that market perception and then the demand. So the demand really is across the board, but I'll highlight a couple of things. A number of respondents felt that a mix of parcel sizes is really what's needed. So it's not that it's all, you know, one industrial park with, each parcel is ten acres. It's really a mix of use that's in demand. And especially a combination of smaller parcels and units available within industrial zones. So think about the demand from a landscaping or contracting company, storage facility, those kinds of uses intermixed with larger industrial parcels. And then, of course, as probably is no surprise, readily available water and sewer infrastructure is what's most attractive. So where that's available is obviously in high demand, and then there's other places where it's, it could be added to address some of the needs. When we look at the small parcels and building sites that are in most demand, it's flex space, it's general warehouse, tool shop space, you know, small buildings with loading docks, things like that. In the large space, it's really kind of that ten-acre and above, you know, with demand for, you know, for expansion. So a business owner coming in and putting in a, you know, thirty to forty thousand square foot facility with the hopes that they could expand it up to, you know, perhaps fifty or sixty thousand over, square feet over time. Those, of course, once we get to that size, you're talking about sprinkler systems being required. And so even more so, the water and sewer being a key consideration. We did, again, with help from township staff and others, looked at not just what's the demand, what's the supply, but also are there areas in the township that could potentially be looked at as areas to expand, you know, in marginal, small degrees and where appropriate, industrial zoning and industrial use. So there's a couple areas in the report that are highlighted. I'll touch on these briefly, but again, I'm not a planning expert, so this isn't necessarily a full recommendation. It's simply just an area that many of the respondents and some of the other professionals we consulted with thought could be an area for consideration. The first of those is McCrayville Hill Road, north of the U-Haul site, while still maintaining an important view buffer along US-31. That's a limited spot. So there's, none of these spots are going to just, you know, increase supply by a huge amount. But they're limited, but they're valuable options, is I guess the best way to put it. The second of those is a southeast corner, the southeast corner of Garfield and Emerson, near the TC Christian School. There's space, large parcel available that's attractive to many. The third is the northwest corner of Hammond and Town Line, adjacent to the existing Traversefield Industrial. So kind of both sides of that, that industrial, Traversefield Industrial Site. And then the southwest corner of Hammond and Town Line, adjacent to the Hughes Industrial Site. These are all parcels that are not currently zoned industrial, but could potentially be zoned industrial from a standpoint of them being attractive parcels and them being immediately adjacent or close to existing industrial so as to not, I guess, mess with the character of the region and the neighborhood. The final area that we've been involved with is the northwest corner of Rennie School Road and US-31. This one is a little bit different in that there's already some potential or pending plans. And Traverse Connect has advised the property owner on how to develop the potential right mix, mixed use for that. And we're trying to provide guidance as to what is in demand, what is feasible, and what is most appropriate, given the township's goals and objectives. So we're trying to help them with that. So those are potential spots that could be looked at for the expansion of industrial use. I would say, again, the study indicates that there's demand and addressing that scarcity could potentially be a benefit for Garfield Township. We think that, obviously, as you well know, the development pressures that you face are going to continue to be considerable and continue to be, put you at kind of the epicenter of growth in this region. So anything you can do to address some of that demand could be potentially beneficial for the township. And so that's the prepared report. I'm happy to take questions on that or also the broader economic development priorities that are detailed in some of our other reporting to you now or later.
I was just thinking, as you were talking and looking at these layouts, some of these areas are a little concerning for me, because I know there's a lot of watershed in some of these areas, which they can play around and stay away from that, stay out of the wetlands. But if you were to prioritize commercial, industrial, and residential, how would, in your, in what you know here, which would be one, two, and three? I mean, I know we have commercial sites, we have light industrial, and then we have residential needs.
That's a really tough question.
I know, and it's not an easy one to answer, probably.
I think that, I think from, and I'll just editorialize here, I think that the township is doing the region's work as it relates to residential construction, especially apartment-style construction. So there's much more that can be done and Housing North's latest report indicates continued demand for housing. But there is a lot going on, right, in the township already. I would say that from a commercial standpoint, I think there's an opportunity potentially to reuse and repurpose and redevelop existing commercial. Now, think about the malls, et cetera. I think it's, the pinch point that we've heard, and I think the reason for the request in the study is there's just such a limit to the industrial, the industrial use. So that's certainly the highest pinch point from a standpoint of the demand versus the supply right now. But that doesn't negate the fact that, you know, overall, housing is probably still the biggest priority.
And in that priority of housing, would you see more condo or independent homes being needed more?
Yeah. I actually would want to go back and look at the Garfield, sorry, not the Garfield, but the Grand Traverse County specific addendum in the housing needs assessment that was just published at the end of July. Because what I remember off the top of my head is three thousand rental unit demand for the county, seven and a half, seventy-five hundred homeownership demand, so a gap of eleven thousand or thereabouts. But I don't remember off the top of my head the breakdown of size of units or income level of units. I'd have to go back and look at that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ken?
I don't have a question, I just had a comment. I think this is a good study to have, but the timing is really good because the Planning Commission, actually, this, later this month in its study session, is starting to look at its future land use map as part of the new master plan, which should be adopted next year. So this type of information is going to be really helpful to identify where those locations are for, you know, new industrial development. So this is definitely timely.
Great.
So obviously, we hire your organization because you're the expert in this and we are not. And you're suggesting that if we change the use of these areas, we could draw in businesses If there's such a demand, and maybe you know the answer to this, are developers, like, reaching out to you saying, hey, I have an interest in going here, what can we do to change the use, to where we'd come to the board and have that discussion, versus us being proactive and changing it ourselves?
It's a little, it's a little bit of both. I mean, we are kind of getting to that. I mean, I think one of the reasons we wanted to have this study done was that we are seeing our industrial parks kind of fill out. And so we're trying to identify where are those new locations. Some of that is going to be developers that are going to provide the space for those. A lot of times, though, we also get actual companies that are looking to site, and they're finding limited options. So it's really kind of identifying these areas so that we can accommodate for the developers that will build those parcels of varying size that are served by water and sewer. But that would also then feed back into that need for actual companies that are looking for, you know, sites. So this, I mean, we do need to identify where are those kind of future industrial areas. So this will give us some of that guidance.
Yeah, I would say to that question, there's kind of two anecdotes that I would share with you. One is related to some of our business attraction initiatives. We're seeing considerable interest from marine technology, boat manufacturing and production components of marine use. And when we talk to those companies, what they're asking about is the ability to locate kind of small-to-medium-size assembly and production as close as possible to downtown. And so there's, that's an example of something, you know, boat assembly would be something that we could probably fill up in a small industrial parcel very quickly. There's also, just kind of, again, anecdotally, I get a call probably once a week from someone elsewhere, from elsewhere, who wants to do development here. And oftentimes, what they've done is they've not really looked very closely at the zoning map, or they've looked really closely at the parcel viewer and not the zoning map. And so, you know, to your point about wetlands, you know, hey, there's a thirty-acre parcel here that looks like it's zoned perfectly for development. It's just north of Meyer, between US-31 and Silver Lake. And it's like, well, that's not going to happen. So those are the kind of demand responses we get just all the time.
I have a question for you. So why do these boat manufacturers and part manufacturers want to be close to downtown? They don't market there. Is it just for the entertainment and housing and those kinds of things? Or what's their, what are they telling you about why they want to be close to downtown?
It's really thinking of it from like a logistics hub standpoint. They want to be close, and I probably shouldn't necessarily say downtown, because I think if I had to draw an epicenter around it, it's CAS and South Airport. Is, they want to be as close to that as possible because of...
You know, between CAS and Union, you know, all that.
Yeah. Because of a perceived, especially if they're from elsewhere, a perceived need to be close from a standpoint of transportation, workforce, housing, et cetera. That's the demand.
So anything close to Lefraine or, you know, any of those kinds of things would meet both of those?
Correct. Well, and especially when we are talking to an organization that is not based here currently but has interest in. Taking a drive up Lefraine gives them a lot of confidence that there's, you know, workforce housing. So that's a good selling point.
Are you, we've had a developer who's right off thirty-seven, got a pretty big piece of parcel of land up there. Have you been in discussions with, well, it's Ocean Family Property?
Yeah, that was the parcel that I detailed on the last page there, the, north of Rennie School Road and west of 31. We've been actually working with them for, boy, about as long as this agreement, maybe even before this agreement was inked, if I'm not mistaken. Trying to help them, guide them in such a way that the redevelopment of that parcel is appropriate, given your zoning and interest and the demand that we're seeing. The need for maintaining, hopefully, some multifamily housing, you know, multi-unit housing, as well as light industrial use. There's a lot of opportunity to have like small parcel light industrial use mixed in with maybe some larger parcels on that property. Obviously, there's either, and I might say it wrong here, John, either PUD or zoning changes needed. And there's also, they need to figure out their water and sewer supply, or rather, just their water supply.
And for that kind of infrastructure, is Traverse Connect connecting to pots of money or something else to help them with that infrastructure?
We have given them all the options that are available for how a private developer may fund that. There's a lot of options, not all of them are as attractive as some, but we've tried to educate them on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Very good report, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Our pleasure. Thanks for the opportunity. Thank you.
Let's see, next is the Planning Department report.
Good evening. You have my report in your packet there. Just highlight a few things. Tomorrow evening, the Planning Commission meets. There's some projects that we expect to have completed, including the Village at Garfield, which is an eighty-unit apartment complex there at Garfield and north of Hammond Road. There's also a site plan review for Bish's RV at Meadow Lane and 31. Also will be introduction of portable storage solutions. It's the old Pepsi building there on CAS Road. Also, a rezoning request for Hartman Road as well. Also, just want to mention that we are going, as I mentioned earlier, we're going through the master plan process. We're on track to probably wrap up a draft by the end of this year, early beginning of 2024. And like I mentioned, we're going through and doing the future land use designation map, which is essentially that map over there that's on the wall and having those discussions on where there needs to be some of the newer development, not just from the industrial areas like Warren was covering, but also, you know, looking at some areas that will, for residential as well. Commercial, we are seeing, there are specific areas where... we are seeing, there are specific areas where commercial businesses want to be in Garfield Township, and those areas so far are really kind of serving that demand. We're seeing quite a bit of turnover of underutilized properties. And so that seems to be working a lot for the, the commercial needs. But certainly residential and industrial are things we're going to be looking at in the future land use map. That's about it.
I got one little quick question for him. Is there, when you do the master plan redo, is there any thought of changing or adding to the land use types?
Yeah, I think one of the things we wanted to do is give some greater flexibility. So that's one thing we're going to be talking with the planning commission, so that there are some times when we find that a certain location, why we think it might work for commercial maybe doesn't work, and maybe some other types of uses could be in there, whether it might be, let's say, multifamily or some type of light industrial use. So that gives some broader range of where we would like to see uses. Also, we think it's important to identify there are some specific areas that have the potential to be very unique developed areas or redevelopment areas within the township. And that's something we want to add as almost kind of another layer to the future land use map that will identify some districts, some like neighborhood areas, or some nodes where they have like an intersection area, as well as some corridors. So that will help to supplement the future land use map and give a little bit more flexibility, but also kind of identify those unique areas.
Okay. Yeah, because I always thought it'd be interesting, Chuck, if we had like zoning that, you know, it's, let's say a big parcel is owned commercial, but you, somebody wants to do light industrial, that we could have a downgrade of that zoning ordinance within that unit. Or somebody's got a, I don't know why they do this, but they would go from an R3 down to an R2 type change, that we would allow that type of downgrade. I would call it a downgrade because it's not as intense. But, you know, the commercials to change to industrial, I think, could be an easy one, because it's a lower impact than the commercials. But I, I don't know if we would ever entertain something like that.
Well, certainly, there's, I mean, it's not happened very often, but, you know, people that are interested in down zoning property does happen from time to time. But I think what you're talking about is really that flexibility in the application and not be, you know, locked into, you know, like in the case of the, the Olson property, it's such a large volume that, that is identified as commercial, when the reality of that, that's way too much commercial. And it's going to have to be a probably good mix of different uses, you know, industrial, you know, there is already some retail commercial there, but then maybe, you know, multifamily at the edge or something like that. I think what you want to have is some flexibility to identify those areas as, as we see development occurring, just making sure that they're planned out so they have the appropriate water, sewer service, roads, and so forth.
Right, okay.
And I think if you let people write the wrong zoning, we'd be covered with storage.
Yeah, there's a lot of that, yeah.
There's a lot, there's a lot of people that want to change residential to storage.
Yeah.
They want to change industrial, everything to storage.
Yeah.
So it's a-
And intermixing them can be kind of unique. I've been in areas that have had industrial and commercial mixed, and then on the outskirts of it, there's been a hotel and some restaurants. And it kind of works pretty handy. I mean, for like engineers, when I was an engineer and traveling, if I could get a place right next to the factory that we were going to. So I've seen some of that, but you got to be careful that it blends.
Yeah, I mean, we've had a lot of interest in industrial areas. And one thing we, for other uses, non-industrial uses, everything from like childcare centers to, you know, apartments and that type of thing. But one thing we do want to ensure that our industrial businesses, our manufacturers that are out there, you know, as much as those have improved, they're now doing a lot of things indoors that maybe 50 years ago they didn't. There are still industrial operations. They have trucks coming in and out of there all times. We want to make sure that they have the opportunity to function without having the impact of some of those uses right on top of them. So, but we, we understand that relationship, but it's, we don't want to just say, okay, you can kind of come into these areas. We want to be able to protect those industrial businesses so they're not hindered. And that's, so that's one of the districts we still kind of hold pretty hard to on some of those.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Next item is the treasures report.
All right. So you should see your normal report that you're used to seeing, and then also one of these that was left up here, 6H. But for my normal report, there's not much to note. Pretty usual activity. Does anyone have any questions on that before I go on to the next report?
Sure. Just give me a rundown on why in the last three months we're a million dollars down in the unrestricted fund.
Oh, we transferred money to the park. We did the park transfer, which was 470,000. And then we also played our, paid part of our police contract, our quarterly police contract. And we don't have a lot of revenue coming in this quarter. So that's why. Any other questions? Okay, so the next part, I'm very sorry that this is, this was just added on last minute, but the state approved their 2024 budget and the governor signed it last week. And the legislature appropriated another 1% to communities for the CVT revenue sharing if you obligate your ARPA funds by the end of this year. So the federal guideline is the end of next year, but the state is saying if you do it by the end of this year, you get this extra 1% in the CVT revenue sharing. So we were hoping to get started on our obligating of our funds. So Chuck and I, and we were able to contact Lainey a little bit because she's out this week. But the finance committee kind of came up with these categories and percentages, and this is kind of just the first step. It's not to commit to any projects in particular, but we just want to be able to give staff something to work at, on, work with, so they can start putting together a project list for us to look at as a board. So I guess we're looking for your feedback on what you think. This is just a starting point that we kind of went with. I don't know if you want to say anything about it, Chuck, but-
Yeah, I think we talked about it a little bit before, but we didn't get specific in terms of what we'd recommend. And that's, we have a four-person finance committee. We just tossed around some ideas and argued a little bit. And this is, this is where we settled in. And it is a recommendation. So it's a place to start a discussion. It could change. You know, if there's, the majority here feels that we should have more township beautification, we can do that.
Are we looking at having a study session so that we can kind of go through these better? And this is something worth seeing?
I think, I think that what we're, we've got enough money. We have enough projects that need to be done. I think it would be, if we decide to put X amount of dollars into parks, like our recommendation is 20%, which should be $372,000, I would think that would be something for the Parks and Rec Commission to-
Come to us with a request?
To come to us with, with recommendations on where they would go with that.
So these numbers would be over and above what's in-
But this is, yeah, over and above their normal budget.
Oh, they will like that.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, so ARPA money, we, oh, sorry, go ahead, Chuck.
Yeah, we looked at water and sewer. We bid three PRVs last year, thinking that the three of them together were going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of 1.2 million. One of them is over a million dollars. So we ended up doing one of the three. And I think it would be, you know, I, I think if we could put 25% towards water and sewer, that would help tremendously as we transition into our new rate structure. And we'll talk a little bit about that here in the, later in the meeting.
I think this is a great plan.
I like the trail connectivity one, but sidewalk?
It's, sometimes they're interchangeable, and I'm not a big fan of sidewalks, especially next to highways.
Yeah. The trail connectivity, we're getting a lot of discussion. Joint Rec Authorities talking, you know, Hickory Forest is coming online. They were supposed to break ground this week on trails up in there. And with us doing what we're doing in the commons, and then we've had the people talk about crossing Wyatt down to the Y and then the intersection of South Airport and Silver Lake is going to be set up to where it could have a trail going through there or a crossing. They were, there was discussion of trying to connect like Silver Lake Park down through to Buffalo Ridge, and then to the commons also connecting down into there, and then going around through the commons, and then going behind maybe Olson's on West Silver Lake Road, yeah, West Silver Lake Road, getting over into Hickory Forest, which connects into Hickory Hills, which connects into the city. I mean, that would be a very huge connection.
I think the long, the long-term goal would be to connect all of the schools and all of the subdivisions to all of the parks and the shopping areas without having to walk on the road.
Yep.
That's, that would be ideal.
And there was talk about the Montessori. There was some conversation about the Montessori contacting road commission to work with a crossing there at Frankie and Silver Lake, because they want to be able to take the kids across the street into the Barnes Park and the commons if we get the trails done. But there's really no safe crossing there. So they were gonna, we had mentioned that the best avenue was for them, the school, the Montessori people, and that to get ahold of the road commission, because we don't do that.
They have Frankie Road with a light.
There's a light.
Yeah, there's a light there.
Wanted to, there was something about a crossing there that they wanted to improve. And we just said, we don't do that. You need to get with the road commission with whatever improvement you want. But I think once they cross the road, I don't know that there's a trail right there right now across from the light there.
Yeah.
Well, so dry.
Is there, was there?
Yeah, it picks right up there.
Yeah, it picks right up there.
And I don't know what they were talking about, what that communication was, but we dumped it onto the Montessori to handle it.
Yeah, we've had an inquiry from the high school. The safe routes to school have been extended to secondary schools. So West Senior High would like to make sure that they have some way for kids to get from their school through the new walk around the senior project there.
Yep.
Which would get them onto a street which runs right down to Wyatt, which would get them onto the safe routes to school that connects to Junior High. So there's a, that kind of connectivity is all, like, I think has always been part of our long-term plan.
Yeah, and I'm glad to see it on here.
Yep.
Walkable, bikeable.
Without having to be dealing with cars that are going 55 miles an hour.
Correct. Yes.
Do you, I guess what I'm asking is, do we, do you need a motion on this, that we go ahead with the tentative ARPA spending plan?
If you feel that's appropriate, yeah.
I would make a motion that we go with the tentative ARPA spending plan that was presented by Chloe.
Is there a second?
I think I would like to talk about it more.
Yeah.
Well, after the second we have-
No, I mean-
Questions.
In more detail than what we have just listed here.
Yeah, again, I-
I'll second it, and then I'm going to say discussion.
Okay.
Okay, I, I think, I mean, we just got this handed to us.
I know, I'm sorry.
It would be, and it's not your fault that that happened. It would be nice to have some discussion about it, find out what everybody, I know you've got four members on that committee who came in and said, this is the way that we ought to break it down, but-
Who's your fourth?
Betty.
Okay.
You know, we've got other members of this board that may want to have some discussion.
Yeah.
Give it a week or two or some time. And visit, do you need to do it today or?
It's, the goal would be to commit. And according to our friends at MTA, we haven't defined the word commit yet.
Okay.
So we want to commit by the end of the year.
Yeah.
But we don't know exactly what commit means.
Yeah, it doesn't, yeah, it doesn't mean, do you have the plan in place and you're ready to go? Or does it mean that you just have an idea and you're ready to?
Does it mean that you've signed contracts?
Yeah, what does it mean?
What is, what is commit? So we'll, we will find out, but it is, you know, it's August, you know, at the end of this month, we got four months to go.
Well, let's, we've talked for the last six months about having discussion about how to spend this ARPA money, and we haven't had any discussion about that.
Yeah. And, and again, I, we can, we could do the, you know, we could enter into the Parks and Rec conversation. There's not a lot of reason to talk about water and sewer. But I think Jennifer can give us some good guidelines in terms of our highest priorities there. Roads are, we've got specifics.
I'm not necessarily against these, but I just kind of like to think about things a little bit before I-
Sure.
Just go, oh, let's go spend a million eight.
So can I rescind that motion and bring about the next meeting?
No, you cannot. We're going to vote.
So you guys want more time to think about the percentages?
I have questions.
Because what's going to happen is we're going to give it to staff to put together a list of projects within this framework. And then the board's still going to pick which projects they like. But are you guys saying you would like to look at these percentages more closely? Because you will still have opportunity to actually pick which, what we spend it on. This is just to give staff an idea of what the board would, is leaning towards. Does that make sense? No.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this isn't, these are just examples for you guys to kind of see what these different categories mean. And then we're going to turn them over to the different department heads to come up with, okay, I got, you know, for John, we'll give John for parks, he's got 372,000 for trails. So the parks department can put a list of their projects, and we can pick which one we would want to fund with our money, if that makes sense.
Well, are these, these percentages etched in stone?
No. No, it's just kind of a guideline, I think, for them to work with.
When we see the list, we could say, yeah, you know, we really need to think about that a little more.
Yeah, and I think it will change.
And we can change those things around?
Yeah. This is just a starting point, just so staff can start. If that makes sense.
Do we have to spend it by the end of the year, or commit whatever that commit means?
Yeah.
Commit.
Whatever that means.
And I think of it as being, I think of that as being under contract myself.
I would think, that would be how I would think of it, but we haven't received an official-
Yeah. Because then that means all this has to go out for quote. That's all, that's all.
Yeah, that's what we're worried about, the timeline wise. So, but-
Yeah.
Actually, the fall's the best time to bid things, so.
Yeah.
We need to get moving.
Can be. It depends on the projects they have. If they have a lot of wrapping up going on, it may tie up their guise and sources. But the bidders should be loosened up a little bit, I would think.
Yeah, you want to be the first, one of the first projects to get bid rather than the last. We found that out on the sewer project just recently.
So I guess I'm not so opposed if it's under the scenario that you're talking about, where you're going to come back and we're going to have a bunch of projects we can look at.
Yeah.
And say-
And like it says, it's tentative.
This is more important than that one.
Yeah.
Was that.
So maybe Denise could redo her motion in just the fact that we would discuss each category as it comes up with the ideas from the department heads.
That's been the intention all along, yes.
Yeah, it's very flexible. No, it's very flexible. Definitely, this is just a starting point for staff to start with. But any changes you want to make today to it, we could definitely do.
I think by me saying it was tentative, we could make those changes. I don't have to put it in a formal motion, because it says tentative right down there.
Said to accept the plan, which is tentative.
I think Chris had a question.
And it's, again, nothing is written in stone. And we could drop a category altogether and double another.
Yeah.
Chris had a question.
Anything's possible.
Mr. Barsha.
You know, we did the community survey. My only thing would be is how do these percentages compare to what the community wants, what Warren called just recommended to us. So I kind of feel like a, like a, like a study session where we could sit down and talk, how does it compare to our, our budget planning? That's just how I would prefer to do it. But I know, like you said, this is just a starting point.
Right.
Do we even need to make a motion? Can't you go to staff and say, okay, here's?
We have a motion and a second right now. So at this point, if we just start here, and we will have a, a study session for our budget in the near future, and we can include this in that conversation.
That's what I would like to do.
Yeah. I don't think we're going to get into the kind of minutia that you're looking for, because that's like a year-long project. And we, if we want to commit by the end of the year, we're going to have to-
Yeah, get going.
Yeah.
Cut bait.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
We're going to have to throw all the bait in right now.
They did try.
Look at the survey, too.
We're going to have to chum the water, Chuck.
Here we go. So we have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions or comments?
I was just going to say, I did look at the survey when considering this, and there was a lot of people in support of bike path sidewalks, and for the township to fund those. But our survey didn't really address water, sewer.
Right.
I don't think it addressed roads. Parks a little bit.
Yeah, most of it was parks.
Roads goes to safety, though.
Yeah. But, you know, it didn't really address, like, the stuff under township beautif- it didn't really address most of the- Yeah, um, but, you know, it didn't really address like the stuff under Township Beautiful, it didn't really address most of the, these categories.
Yeah, and that's the thing is, is you're.
But they did say they wanted the walkability, they liked the.
Like, to say what Chloe said too, with your water and sewer, they're not gonna compliment, they're not gonna say anything on a survey about that because that's not really their concern. They want the trails and, you know, they want things like that.
Live on ridge if you want water.
Well, yah! I want water, but you know, that, that's just it. They, you know, they're not gonna compliment, they're not gonna, they're gonna say they want better trails or better parks or things like that.
Yeah, I think it's fairly representative of everybody's wants to some degree. So we can fine tune it and I look forward to the conversation.
All right.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thanks Chloe.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, sorry, it was so last minute, I know, it's frustrating.
Next item is the clerk's report, which is in writing.
Mm-hmm.
She is off camping on the river, I understand.
Good.
Last but not least, the supervisor's report. A couple of things of interest, one of them is, I was invited by the acting city manager. To a meeting to talk about, um, the homeless problem. And, um, it was kind of an ambush. There was, there were people from Safe Harbor, Goodwill, the Coalition to End Homelessness. Um, and, uh, the Free Health Clinic, um, city attorney, the city, acting city police chief and the, and the fire chief. Um, so it was kind of like eight against one. But I was able to speak and tell them what I felt and I think there wasn't a lot of argument. You know, it's like there, there is some, one of the things that they talked about at the meeting was that they are, the gal from the Health Department who is, um. City Commissioner, my.
Mm-hmm.
Um, said that, um, they are finding that the community is not as generous as they were in the past. And I said, I think the reason for that is that there's, people are losing faith in the solutions that they're presenting and using. And it, there's a, it's time to look at doing something more in the way of substance abuse and mental health. As opposed to the housing-first myth, as I like to call it. Cause all you gotta do is take somebody who's living in squalor, drunk and put them in a house and everything will be fine. It, it literally doesn't work.
As long as they can continue to live in squalor and.
Yeah, and well, we have a wet house where they, there's always an adult in the house. There's always somebody who's sober and over, you know, watching over everybody else. Um, and I think it's done a fairly good job of reducing, um, the police and ambulance and, uh. All kinds of issues that, uh, they, the homeless bring to the community in terms of expense, so.
But so much of it is mental illness, you're right. I mean, we need to be thinking about those things.
Yeah, and I think what the county's doing with having like a, uh, intervention center for episodes. And then having some longer-term setup for people who just need a chance to recharge and reset. Um, so they don't fall off into the abyss. So I'm, I was kind of hopeful at the end, but, um, it sounds like more than anything else, they want to build a year-round shelter in the city. That's.
They have one just run it year-round.
Um, yeah, the person who, from Safe Harbor who was there said that's never gonna happen. Just, he can't, it's like, doesn't have air conditioning, they don't have enough budget, it's just like a, a rough.
It's all volunteer.
And the volunteers are.
Volunteers are, everyone's doing the work, it's pretty tough.
So they, they're gonna, they're looking, they're gonna do something. Um, I, like I said, I, I was heard. Uh, the other thing is we just finally got the petitions together for the Jefferson Street project. It were, um, you know, everybody knows John Racine, he's very thoughtful. He wanted to make sure that, you know, nobody was gonna be uncomfortable with the solutions. But we got the petition and they're ready to go, so we should see that project soon, moving forward. Uh, and unless there are any questions, that's the supervisor's report. Uh, next item is unfinished business and we have no unfinished business. We will start new business. Item A is a public hearing for consideration of amendment to ordinance fifteen. Operation and maintenance of the Grand Tewas County Water Supply System Number One, Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one T. And essentially, we have set rates, benefit fees and other charges over the years through ordinance. So every time you want to change a rate, you have to have a public hearing, you have to publish. Um, like for years, the, uh, to turn the water on and off was like a ten-dollar charge. The figure to cost us about fifty bucks to get somebody out there to do it, so. We just, nobody wanted to do it just because it was burdensome. So this is, this will allow us in the future to modify by resolution as opposed to ordinance.
Is there a range that, um, that that it can change just by resolution? And if it got to be too high of change?
Right.
It might not be.
Um, it's within the, the purview of this board. I mean, the board has to decide whether they want to raise it.
This is basically just giving us permission to do it through a resolution, whatever we decide.
Correct.
Okay.
And what we're seeing is that things are changing more rapidly in terms of expenses.
Yeah.
Um, so, and we, we have some systems now that'll be in place, which will kind of tell us right away when we're drifting off course. So we can make corrections more quickly. But we're still, I don't think we're gonna be, I don't think we will be into that. We're in the lowest tier of, you know, water and sewer charges, so I don't think we're gonna go past midway for certain. But that's, um, why we're having a public hearing. So if there's anyone here who would like to speak to this ordinance amendment, if you'd be so kind as to come to the podium. And give us your name and address. One at a time.
Don't rush, right?
All right, we will close public comment at this point and come back to the board for.
I would like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one dash T. Adopting amendments to number forty-two of the ordinance fifteen, operation and maintenance of the Grand Tewas County Water Supply System Number One, Garfield Township.
Support.
We have a motion and support to adopt the resolution as presented. Are there any questions or comments? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Agustinelli?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Barshaf?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes. At our next meeting, we will have a resolution.
Perfect.
Good.
Thank you.
Uh, next item is consideration of Burnley Meadows Site Condominium Application SPR two oh two-three dash oh four. John?
Yes, you have in front of you, uh, this is the Burnley Meadows, uh, Site Condominium. It's located, uh, off of, uh, kind of south of Burnley Road. It's actually part of near an existing, uh, Burnley, uh, Hills, or excuse me, Burnley Estates subdivision that's located there. This was kind of the last piece that was initially intended to be planted out back in the eighties. This is a site condominium that will consist of, uh, twenty-six single-family residential lots. The lots will range in size between fifteen and forty thousand square feet. The development will be serviced, uh, by water and sewer and all utilities will be underground. The Planning Commission did go through a process, uh, there was an introduction back on May tenth at setting the public hearing. And then on June fourteenth, the Planning Commission did hold a public hearing. And did at their July twelfth meeting, uh, review and, uh, adoption of findings of fact, which you have in the report presented with you. Uh, the project meets all the standards in the ordinance and is being presented to you for consideration of, uh, the findings of fact. As well as approval of the proposed site condominium.
All right. Yes, ma'am?
I'd like to make a motion that the findings in fact for application SPR dash twenty twenty-three dash zero four submitted by TR Investments. For a site condominium of parcel number zero five dash two zero two-six dash zero two-zero dash thirty-three. Has presented in the Planning Department Report twenty twenty-three ninety-three and is recommended for adoption by the Planning Commission be adopted.
Support. We have a motion and support to adopt the findings of fact as presented. Are there any questions or comments? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
Who seconded that?
Chris.
Barshaf?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Agustinelli?
Yes.
And Corn?
Yes. Yes, ma'am?
Motion, uh, I make a motion that application SPR dash two zero two-three dash zero four submitted by TR Investments. For the site condominium of parcel zero five dash zero two-six dash zero two-zero dash thirty-three be adopted, subject to the conditions as listed.
Support.
Perfect. We have a motion and support? Any questions or comments?
I was wondering if she was gonna read each one or just.
No.
A roll call vote, please?
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Barshaf?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Agustinelli?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes. Motion passes. This is where you celebrate.
Yeah.
Uh, the next item is consideration of recommending a Class C liquor license for high tops. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash eighteen dash T. And this is, uh, our Class C liquor license. We have a applicant who is reopening one of the restaurants in the Grand Tewas Mall.
Jonathan B. Pub.
Jonathan B.'s Pub. And, um, he would like to have a liquor license, um, the liquor license. Uh, we heard from, uh, Mr. Query from, uh, the, um, Curling Club that they were interested in the same license. So the, um, if you would like to hear from the applicant, um. Evening.
Just start talking?
Yeah. Give us your name and address and.
Uh, Philip Beeler, uh, seven five two five Cedar Run Road. Um, my daughter and I, uh, were in the process of opening up, uh, pub, restaurant, uh, kind of entertainment facility. It'd be the old Jonathan B. Pub's with the, so far, the two adjacent spots next to it. So it'd be about six thousand square feet. Um, I think the only thing that's changed on the initial plan was that we were gonna try to do the twenty-four-hour restaurant. Um, we just came up with probably last month or so, um. Other than that, I'm not sure, do you have anything to say?
This is not my strong point.
I'm Christina Beeler, Philip Beeler's daughter. I live at three one one two Hammond Road East. I, we opened a salon there last November, Premier Thirty-One, so we have been talking with the mall about things to get it livened up again. The salon has been pretty successful. Um, Jonathan B. Pub is basically very tore up and empty and boarded up. So we like to bring like more American food restaurant and hopefully bring more people to the mall and then open up some more stuff. I know that they've talked about other stores going in there, but just trying to liven that back up. Have games, pool, cornhole, darts, stay open later. Possibly if everything gets going smooth, have like a buffet or, you know, twenty-four hours. But that would have to come with staffing, that would be later on taking off, but not right away. But just getting that place to.
I have a question, but it might be you have to answer that.
Okay.
If it's a twenty-four-hour establishment, can they serve liquor for twenty-four hours?
No.
Okay.
No.
What time is the cutoff? I mean.
Two AM.
Two AM, okay.
Yep.
And can come back up at seven AM though, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's what I, that's the question, that's what I want to answer. Thank you.
Right now, there's only Chinese food in the mall and we just saw.
Well, there's no twenty-four-hour restaurants.
Or that either, so.
Can you tell me a little bit about, uh, Class C liquor license? We get one?
We, as of the twenty-twenty census, when the results were finally published last year, we were given three. Um, we have already given away two and we've had three other applicants that have asked for this that we have denied. Um, because they were. We didn't, I mean, the idea is it's the last one, we would want to have it be something that would provide a, um, economic stimulus. Bring some, some activity to the area, uh, and hopefully stick around for a while.
Yeah. Do we, uh, just, I don't know, if the board should legitimately be asking about. Uh, can you guys afford to stick around for a while? I mean, what, what's the financial? I mean, if we give our last liquor license to somebody who really can't do it, I mean, how do we know that?
It's not established yet.
All right.
You mean as far as our finances?
No.
Good.
You see what I'm saying? I just want to make sure that if we give that last liquor license.
I have the financing.
Well, I have ninety-nine point nine percent of the financing, you got the rest, right?
The Premier Thirty-One Salon and then the malls also offered, you know, help us clean it up.
Well, we're not taking loans out, it's all, we have the cash to do it, the whole project.
I guess my concern would be Chuck that is, when is this going to be open?
We would like to start right away.
I mean, when are you gonna be open for business?
Um, probably no later than six months. That's a lot, we have to remodel.
Right, I understand that, but I, I guess my concern is like the Curling Club, they're already established.
Yep.
You know, and we have something that we're giving a Class C liquor license to someone that's not established yet. They're saying they're gonna be open in six months, but it may end up being a year. And in that year's period of time, we have a Class C liquor license that's not being used, basically. You see what I'm saying?
I do.
Okay.
Steve?
I know you and I had talked and maybe explain to them when we would get our next Class Cs.
Yeah, the next one will be after the twenty-thirty census. It'll be probably eight or nine years before we see another license.
I'm not against it, I guess I just want to see our options all at once, is what I'd like to see.
Okay.
You know, maybe bring this resolution back with the resolution that the Curling Club may be. And maybe there's another one out there that's gonna watch this meeting and say, you know, hey, we got an idea too. And just look at the ideas of everybody and bring it together as a unit.
Mm-hmm.
Not, it's a good idea, I'm not against it, I just, I, I want to see the options, I guess, my own opinion.
Love the location, love the idea that, that you're gonna revitalize a part of that mall. Uh, so I like all those things too, but I, I think if we have several and we only have one and we're not getting another one for eight years, maybe we want to think about it.
There's more, yeah.
Chloe?
Um, I guess my question for you about your hours of operation, cause the mall isn't always open. Would, is there a way to close off where you're establishing?
It has its own entrance to the outside.
Oh, it does, okay, okay, I didn't realize that, that was my question.
Yeah, they already gave us.
The approval, he flew in.
Okay, and I did want to speak to, I worked with the, um, property manager at the mall with the agave situation. And, um, she did speak to me about that particular suite, the Jonathan B. Pub and how they were worried about getting a tenant in there because it does need a lot of work. It was destroyed by the previous tenant and they were worried they weren't gonna get it filled, so. I'm thrilled that someone's gonna put something in there and I think this is cool and I think our mall needs it. this is cool and I think our mall needs it. So I just wanted to speak to that and, and I think it's a, it's a great idea to help revitalize the mall, especially because you're going to be taking up that wing and fill in some space in there and bringing people to that mall, which I think the Curling Club is doing a great job of revitalizing the Chariots Center and they will have their, their club license. And I guess I'm just kind of wondering how easy, if we don't give the Curling Club this, do they have to then acquire it from another business? Is that how it works? If we don't have any to give away, how, could they, is there still means for the Curling Club to get a Class C at a different point in time?
There is, anybody can get a Class C. There are brokers who.
Oh, brokers that sell it.
Yeah. So they will, if they find one where a business is, you know, a, like, a bar is going out of business or a restaurant with a Class C, they, when they go out of business, they can sell that license.
So right now, are they paying for this from the state?
No.
Okay, so it's a lot more expensive to buy.
There's an application fee at the state, but it's not, it's token.
Okay, so it's a lot more expensive to purchase it from somebody than, for us to designate it.
Yeah, to buy one is probably somewhere in the $70,000 range.
Okay.
We're in the wrong business.
I know.
Those, um, Class Cs that would come available from a business going out, do they have to be coming available from our township or can they be anywhere in the state of Michigan?
Anywhere in the state of Michigan.
And then they can just bring that Class C to our township?
Correct.
Okay.
In the past, it's gone the other way too, where we've had businesses go out and then.
It leaves our township.
The license goes down to.
Yeah, it's left our township.
Oakland County.
Can we ask the question of the Curling Club, how soon would they actually be making an application for the Class C? They just got the club license, is there going to be a period of time that they're going to hold that club license before they're ready to actually operate this?
I had.
Or do we know that?
I, I don't know for certain, but I would assume they'd want to do it ASAP.
Could both come back, first meeting of next month and maybe an additional if somebody else wants to ask and we make that decision then?
Can't we do it like two weeks rather than?
Or two weeks, if, I didn't know if two weeks was too soon or a month was better.
We need to make this decision sooner than later on their aspect of building.
Yeah, because that's a month off of the building.
We could be ready in two weeks. You guys could be ready in two weeks to do a fabulous presentation.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate that. So we can put that on the agenda for two weeks and then make the decision at that time?
There we go.
I have a quick question.
Thank you.
Have you guys looked at the options of buying one that's available, like even the agave restaurant that's shut down?
Well, the state took it.
Okay.
And there's, the Jonathan B. Pub was sold. I don't think there's any available in town.
Okay. And then as far as your business model, you said that you're going to have it in the Jonathan B. Pub and then adjacent suites.
Yeah, there was the chiropractic place down that hallway and then all the way into the, where that corner gaming place is, so it'd be that whole length.
That whole corridor.
So would you, you connect all that into one business?
Yep.
And then what experience do you have in operating restaurants?
I've just been in, I'm a, I have my own building, I'm a builder for the last 20 years, which the business part I can get. I've been in the restaurant bar business in my earlier days and then she has been in the management and.
Bartending a restaurant.
Bartending for most of her.
All through beauty school, now I've been running Premier 31 and been doing hair over five years.
And then my parents have owned restaurants.
Okay. But neither of you've like owned a business that's had a liquor license? You don't hold a liquor license somewhere else?
No.
Nope.
Just experience in your, your life?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, a couple of weeks, I guess we'll have a good presentation and.
Make our decision.
We know what date that is.
Two weeks from today.
Eight and 14 would be the 22nd.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. The next item is, and the last item is consideration of ordering two streetlights for Kensington West Condominiums. So in the, typically the practice has been to set up a special assessment district for the streetlight, which means you have to schedule a public hearing, you have to publish, you have to have the public hearing and then you have to set up a roll.
See, I've never had any one of that, was willing to pay for it.
Right. Well, this is, the interesting thing here is it's a, it's a association and the association is willing to take on the responsibility of making the payments and then billing their members.
Good.
So we do not have to go through that process, which is kind of arduous and dumb for a couple of streetlights, which you're.
Right, and then they're going to, HOA is going to be turning around, billing them anyways.
Right.
So they're just taking.
They're billing for snow removal and everything else, so they're just.
Adding light on there. Do we need a motion?
Taking advantage that they have an association.
Do we need a motion on that or do we just say, go ahead and do it?
I would think if, if there are no objections, we're going to do it.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yep.
So some people complain about light pollution when, when lights go up.
Right.
Is there a possibility that the people in that area who aren't affiliated with this request are going to be upset with?
It's, that is all surrounded by this.
By the association?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thinking of that, John has regulations for lighting, right?
Uh, when it's, yeah, there is in the ordinance for lighting, but it exempts street lighting.
Okay.
So if it's in the public right of way and it's for, and this, that would be exempt from our ordinance.
So we don't have like a downward lighting type deal for this or nothing?
Um, that's typically what they do. It's, it's Travis City Light and Power.
Oh, so it's, okay, so it's a, it's a utility company, so they're not going to do just light.
Correct. They contacted Travis City Light and Power and they got a price and everything, but they said, no, the township has to call us, we don't deal with individuals, so that's where they think us.
Okay, all right.
But I just wanted to make sure the board understood what we were doing and we've got it done.
I think it's a go, go for it.
All right, that brings us back to public comment. Do you have any public comment?
We have a commissioner left.
I know. We'll talk again.
Is there any other business come before the board today?
So we will definitely have a meeting in two weeks to make sure we get that liquor license taken care of.
Yes, we will.
Okay, thank you.
They're paying for it all.
And sometime in the near future, we will schedule a study session for budget slash.
Yes, slash.
Arpa fund.
Okay.
Should we, should it be a motion?
All right.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I have one question about the streetlight. Do we need a motion on it just because we will be paying the bill initially and invoicing them to repay us? Do we need to make a motion since we are going to be?
The auditors would probably like that, wouldn't they?
Yeah, I'm thinking maybe.
All right.
I mean, they are ultimately paying for it, but we initially pay and then they pay us back.
All right, I make a motion that we are ordering two streetlights for Kensington West Condominiums, which the HOA will eventually be reimbursing us.
Support. We have motion and support. Any questions or comments?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Now, motion to adjourn?
If there are no objections, we adjourn.